I'd like to call the order, the April 24th, 2023, Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting order. Please take the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Potista?
Here.
Vice Chair Sandoval. Commissioner Betcha?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Habsin asked to be excused from last meeting. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Item number three, approval of the April 10th, 2023 minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections? Not hearing or seeing any, so we will go ahead and declare those meeting minutes accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Is there anybody who wish to speak to any items that are not on the agenda tonight, either in person or online?
No public comment had been received by 4:00 p.m. today, and no one had been signed up for in-person, and for now, I do not see any audience in virtual audience at all.
All right, and it appears as of right now, there are no members of the general public in attendance in person. So we'll move to item number five, discussions on amendments to chapters 15.05 and 15.10, Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Code, Buildings and Construction.
Let me get this set up for you really quickly. You might just send this up for screen share. Will that put it up on the board forum?
Yeah, I've got my...
All right. Sure this is going to work. And why is it not pulling up? There we go. All right, so we're here today to discuss the adoption of the 2021 I codes, which is the International Building Code, Mechanical Code, and Residential Code. Some background, the 2021 building codes and fire codes will become effective statewide July 1st, 2023. Building code cycles are typically updated on a three-year cycle. If it seems like we just did this not too long ago, it's because we did. Because of COVID and other reasons, the 2018 codes were delayed in adoption, so this is to get us back on our typical cycle of every three years. Title 15 in the City of Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Building Code has the 2018 codes cited in several sections. We are going to be adjusting those to the 2021 code cycle to be consistent with Washington State Building and Fire Code amendments. This update code language is to allow the automatic amendments with Washington State codes are adjusted, so we won't be having to go through this whole process every three years, since it's automatically updated from the state. These changes are also, there's also code language to provide consistency with those 2021 code changes that are being adopted. Chapter 15, the International Building Code, there are minor revisions on most of them. One of the biggest ones, I've kind of cited in here, I can provide you with a list of all the adjustments. This is mainly the Washington State amendments to the code cycles. So a lot of them is screening elements in the entries to restrooms to provide some privacy. There is new requirements for automatic closing doors on hold-open devices and automatic releases on hold-doors devices within the same smoke compartment. Occupied roofs have been made, have been clarified to be more consistent with application of codes intent. The biggest thing is what you declare a high-rise roof, 75 feet. So roofs that have occupant loads over 50 will now be considered a floor, not a roof, which can change the overall height of a building. And then solid blocking of cripple walls and full perimeter of dwelling and interior walls on foundations, except for WSP and DWP, to reduce bracing removed. On the IRC, which is the Residential Code, provisions for car charging stations have been added. That will not affect Mount Lake Terrace, as we already have those provisions in our code, and we require more than the minimum from the state. There is clarification on fire separations on an existing dwelling that is, that is an attached ADU, no longer requires fire separation to reduce the price of entry to create an ADU. So moving forward, if someone converts their garage to an ADU, to an existing single-family residence, it will no longer require fire separation between those two structures. There's also some clarification on unstructured path from emergency egress to get someone all the way away from the house, like gates, things of that nature. They provided more information on that. The International Mechanical Code, kind of same thing, minor changes to code mainly for clarifications, as well as the fuel and gas codes. International Existing Code, the Uniform Plumbing Code, same thing, mainly minor changes with clarifications. And the fire code had several changes to the code, to reiterate for buildings by utilizing emerging technologies and other items, including communication devices. The Energy Code, in general, the building will be required to be more efficient, as its saying was in 2018. The state Energy Code is moving toward to achieve legislative goal of 70% reduction of fuel consumption in buildings in 2030, so there are several changes to that code as well to meet that end goal of 2030. Yes, I did use the same slide as we did a year and a half ago to save the citizens their hard-earned money.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you might have mentioned this, and I might have just missed it. Is the ADU fire separation in the Residential Code existing space, or is that if you're adding space to the building?
That's, that's if you have an existing single-family dwelling, and you're adjusting the space to accommodate an ADU. Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. We also have some local amendments, if I remember right?
We do, yes.
Okay. Are we looking at those tonight?
So there's slight changes to code language to make it consistent. It's mainly in the fire code language to make it consistent with the 2021 IFC. So those are in there as well. I'd be happy to go over those. Sorry, did not include that in the slide. It should be in the definitions, but it's mainly...
Mine says starts on page 14.
Thank you.
And the only changes I'm really seeing, at least strikeouts on my copy, are just interchange between fire chief and building official.
Exactly, yeah. So what we want to do is we want to make sure that the City of Mount Lake Terrace, as we are looking to go into South County Fire, that we maintain the authority to keep our buildings safe as the City of Mount Lake Terrace sees fit. So we're changing some of that language to make sure it's the building official, community economic develop director, and our chosen fire marshal are the ones that make those decisions, not someone outside the organization.
Okay, cool. I know there's a House bill somewhere around, floating somewhere around, that looks at adapting what I've heard called the Seattle special, where you have allow up to a six-story building with a single exit access stair. That's, Seattle's got like a, you know, code section kind of dedicated to it, and I think 1006 point, one of those. The, are we out ahead of that? Is that something that we would be looking at? Have our fire people weighed in on that?
So currently, we're just looking at it being consistent with Washington State codes with, with the Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Amendments. Seattle's kind of does its own thing, because it's a very different community, and has to make adjustments to see what it needs to do best for its citizens and life safety. If that's something that we get to the density that we'd like to look at, I'd be more than happy to look at that as an option. But as now, I think with the changes that we're making, it's reducing the threshold for ADUs and some other items. I think that is, is where we're going to be. So I'm not familiarized with that code yet, because that's in Seattle, and, but if it's something that you'd like me to look at, I'd be more than happy to.
Okay. Is local amendment something that necessarily needs to happen on a building code cycle? Or is that something that we can look at?
Yeah, we can make adjustments to our municipal code with not, not the same time.
Okay. I think that's some...
I was just going to add, I believe I read in the last couple of days that legislation did not pass.
Okay.
So as far as the legislature goes, I'm not sure what's happening in the city of Seattle.
Okay. I, I know with the plat of the town center and a lot of sort of single-family lots that are sort of smaller in size, that might be something we might want to look at in the future, but I imagine our fire department would want to weigh in on that, because that does help make smaller-sized buildings work a little bit better architecturally, and also kind of pencil out. And so I would encourage us to look a little bit more seriously at that. I imagine for this particular cycle, it's, we're probably not ready to make that, but I think that's something that we would want to look more closely at, because if the, you know, Seattle's been doing it for a while, it's seen as pretty safe down there. If we can replicate that, I think, you know, we've got this problem where we're sort of have a lot of, you know, density zone for these smaller lots, and anything we can do to help that pencil out a little bit better, and also make the layouts a little bit more flexible, so it's not just, you know, double-loaded corridors with these sort of thick things. I think that's something we should look at, even if the state isn't making us do it.
I'd be more than happy to. I mean, as long as this aligns with what our overall goals are for town center and the style of building we're trying to get in there, adjustments that we can make to encourage development, I'm more than happy to look at, as long as we can demonstrate that we're not reducing the life safety of our citizens in those areas. Seattle does not have as much available land to build on, and they're high-dense areas, where we get fairly consistent calls of them consolidating lots to get the larger portions so they can put, let's say, mixed-use buildings in. So as of yet, I have not heard a hindrance in the development of our town center, based on the size of our lots. But that might be something in the future that, if that becomes a hindrance, that we could look at making adjustments.
Okay. The other thing, sorry, I had...
Okay.
We have noise separation, or we have acoustic separation requirements in the building code. I know that we're looking at, you know, I don't think the state at this point is making us duplex, triplex or fourplex all of our lots at some point, but we're pretty close to that threshold. So looking at sort of indoor quality of space, I think is going to wind up being important as we add maybe 3,000 more people and then cross that 25,000-person threshold. I imagine that a lot of the duplexes in town will probably be built under the Residential Code, and I don't think they have acoustic requirements. Is that something we can make a local amendment to as well?
So building code is typically about life safety. Builders have opted to use sound density materials, like sound channels and things of that nature, and usually they put in those extra items in an effort to sell or rent to a higher rate. I would just always warn that the more requirements that you make, the more expensive it becomes, and we always got to balance the cost of entry for any structure and the return on affordable housing and how those bounce off of each other. But I'd be more than happy to look at options for that. But most builders that want to do that, do that as a sales perk, as opposed to a requirement.
Okay. I think it's probably worthwhile to look at just in order to ensure like the livability of the building stock we have in our town. Functionally, now I know Seattle has, they, in the Residential Code, they've, I think IBC has an STC of 50 requirement, and in the building, in the Residential Code, they have reduced that to 45 STC, but for some reason, they've kept IIC 50, which is actually harder to meet. Functionally, what it looks like is you just kind of wind up throwing a resilient channel in the wall and some insulation, so like, you know, I think we should, I think, first off, it's worthwhile to look at, and second off, like, the requirements don't necessarily have to be that challenging, if we've got some prescriptive things to look at, especially at that level of code. I think that if we can do that, if we can put something like that in advance of us having to comply eventually with the missing middle housing, that that would be worthwhile to look at as well.
Understood.
Cool. That's all I had.
I want to circle back real quick. You know, I guess firewall not being required now for ADU, so that was a decision at the state level that you said?
Correct.
Does the city still have the ability to enforce that if we, if we wanted to have a stricter prescription?
We can, yeah, we can always require more than minimum code. We'd make amendments in our municipal code if that was something that we were looking at. The biggest thing is there was fire separation required from the base of the footing to the top of the roof sheathing, so that requires going through the attic, things of that nature, and with interconnected smoke detectors and other life safety requirements, and I'm more than happy to provide the, the risk analysis that was provided to the state. They didn't see the return on investment of putting a full firewall in between those two structures.
So would, basically where the firewall would be omitted, it is in the roof or attics area?
It, it was omitted between the two spaces. So if it's existing single-family residence, I believe that they were looking at it as, again, cost of entry, try and provide more cost-effective housing options, and when you have to go into your attic, cut, cut through both sides of the building, put a fire-rated wall from your foundation all the way up to the roof sheathing, that's extensively more than just the conversion of the space to accommodate the minimum requirements for an ADU.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious how to, you know, does anybody on the planning commission have any concerns with that, or are they, they find, refine it?
Seattle's been doing it for a long time, or for a while, at least, like several years. The thing that they do require is that if there are two fire, if there, you know, with both dwellings, you have to interconnect the alarms so that they both activate at the same time. So that way, when, you know, there is a fire, like, the assumption is these buildings are kind of small, they've already functioned as a single-family dwelling, you're not like, you know, providing some kind of, like, you're not suddenly turning it into like, you know, a duplex where it's like they're just completely separated. So the fire alarms, both activating when one is triggered, is sort of what's seen as like life safety enough to get people out of the building.
Okay. And I'm assuming staff is comfortable with current code?
Yeah, yeah. Townhomes, duplexing, that still require full rated assemblies. This is just for single-family residents, and you are correct. The life safety acts as a single-family residence, so if one alarm goes off, they all go off and have an opportunity to get out of the house, and that's including carbon monoxide detectors and smoke detectors.
And again, this is only for converting of an existing space?
Correct.
If they're, if they're adding on a bump out or something like that?
If it's a detached ADU, something of that nature, then yeah, it's, then they would have to meet all the life safety criteria of, of a new structure.
Okay. And then the other question I had is that there's a one whole section in here that it just says it's been repealed for a different ordinance for demolition. Demolition and removal of buildings, just, you know, the whole section is blank, it just says it's been repealed by a different ordinance. So I'm assuming that ordinance is where that, that section is covered then?
Yeah, and that, and that could have just been we printed too many pages past where we actually made changes in the code, so that would have been, that's just in our code already adopted.
Okay. But there hasn't been any, any kind of, do we, do we have, do we know when this, when that ordinance repealed? Yeah. I've been doing this for so long, I lose track of how long ago we...
That would have been quite a while ago.
That would have been quite a while ago, because we're on 2824 now, was the one that's passed in February.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't ringing a bell, so I'm kind of curious.
Yeah, that's, that's quite some time ago.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're only mainly looking at the areas that were changed, that were highlighted.
All right, so obviously no, no new changes?
Correct.
In that, or there hasn't been any issues, because I'm sure we would have heard about it by now. Real quick on, on the demolition, why I'm asking, because I want to be corrected if I'm wrong, is it, in the city, houses aren't allowed to be demolished, just demolished to be demolished and nothing else replacing it? Or is that, like, somebody has a house on a lot, the house is just dilapidated, but they don't have the means to, you know, repair or...
Build new.
Build something new, but they don't want to sell, but they know they got to get, can they demo the house and just have the empty lot?
The code does currently allow for them to pull a demolition permit, so that way, if there's any contaminants in the house, that we isolate them, get them removed, and then an empty lot is typically safer than a dilapidated building, where a whole bunch of...
And as long as they're maintaining it, mowing it?
Correct. Yeah, they still have to meet all the nuisance order and everything else in our code, maintaining the lot, but they would be able to remove the, the building, including the foundation, and they would have to make sure they have no ground runoff, things of that nature, but they would be allowed to remove the building and leave it an empty lot temporarily.
They're not requiring full English garden or topiary or something like that. Oh, sorry, little joke. Little levity tonight. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I do not.
The changes here are kind of straightforward.
They were.
You know, nothing, nothing too controversial here, so.
Adopting state, state law?
Yeah.
It's nice to be in compliance with the law.
Yeah. But it's still nice to contain, maintain local control, too.
Yes, and, and that's where we're making a couple adjustments to the fire code, as you kind of saw on there. And then we've also let all the developers that are currently in the process, let them know the code change, and many of them are providing building plans so they could vest if they'd like to prior to this adoption.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, it looks like we are on to item number six, Director's Report.
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to have our new city manager, Jeff Knighton, come up here and say a few words and introduce himself.
Jeff Knighton, new city manager, started one week ago today. I've met a couple of you already, so I just wanted to say thank you. I'm looking forward to working with all of you and helping you realize your goals, but also thank you for volunteering. Thanks for taking the time out of your day to participate in city government and help us, help us run this, this operation, and I appreciate it. And I just wanted you all to know who I am, know what I look like, and let you know you're free to, you know, anytime you need anything, and easy to contact and easy to get in touch with, and I'm happy to help. So, thanks.
Thanks for managing us. I'm glad I, I would not want to do that, so thank you so much for...
That's exactly what I told him. Yeah. So just a couple of things to, to add. Last week, there had, has been a solicitation for artists for some artwork at the new pedestrian plaza that's going to be put in by Sound Transit, that we've been planning on at the end of the trail that goes through Vets Park, and then to the Transit Center for artists presented last week. The Rec and Parks, or the Arts Commission, excuse me, has not made a decision. I was told earlier today that that's forthcoming probably this week, but just wanted to let you know. And those proposals are on the city website. If you're interested, you can take a look at them. Each artist presented two alternative pieces of art for the, the commission to consider as well. Just letting, we spoke a little bit about trying to fill the position for planning commission, and so we're working on that. There's some other board and commission vacancies, so, as well, so if you folks know anybody in the community that's interested, please have them get in touch with us, and we would love to have some more folks volunteering to be on several different vacancies that we have on our, our boards. As well, just in the CED department, we are also out looking for an associate planner right now, and a building inspector. We were out for a building inspector probably about a year and a half ago as well. We were not successful in retaining somebody, but we're out again and hoping to have better luck. So again, if folks know anybody for that. And in addition, there's a lot of additional vacancies in the city. We're going to be looking for a new assistant city manager. We still have a public works director that we're looking for, and some other various positions throughout the city as well. So a lot of you folks come into contact with professionals, and so if get an opportunity, just kind of take a look at what those jobs are, and anybody that you know that would be interested in applying for those. I just was thinking about earlier today, we haven't had a get-together for boards and commissions as well, so I'll be talking to Jeff, I'll put him on the spot here in his first meeting here, but, and just our other folks of just maybe doing something, bringing everybody together. It's been a while, kind of pre-COVID. There's usually an event that we've put together every year, just to acknowledge all you folks and everybody that puts a lot of hours in doing what you do, and reading the materials, and being prepared for meetings and commenting, so just show some appreciation for that as well. And that is all I really have to share at this point in the evening, so be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has for me.
Did you, did you say there was an assistant city manager position open as well?
There will be. Stephen Clifton's last day with the city is this Friday. Stephen's retiring.
Really?
And so he's done his time, and I believe he has plans to spruce up his garden, which, by the way, is already gorgeous, but, you know, he's, he's going to make it even more beautiful. But yeah, so he's retiring at the end of this week.
I'll just say, it was extremely helpful having somebody with a planning background when we were doing the last town center update to help...
Yeah.
Between you and Stephen, you know, kind of walking through the process for the task force that was selected, and, you know, kind of, you know, at least getting us in a firm starting point, you know, to move, to move from it, you know, it was, it was extremely helpful. It's always helpful when a planner is a higher, you know, in those higher-up positions, because they kind of understand those, those nuts and bolts, so. Happy he's retiring, sad to hear he's leaving.
Well, on the good news front, Mr. Jeff Knighton here is a planner, and so even though Stephen's leaving us, Jeff has planning in his blood as well, so I'm happy, happy for that as well. But yeah, I think everybody's going to miss Stephen. We came to the city about a week apart, Stephen and I, so particularly for me, and I know others that have worked with Stephen, he's just been a wealth of knowledge and just a great partner to do things at the city. He's accomplished a lot, got a lot of big projects done, so yeah, but also happy for him that he gets to retire and, you know, do some of the other things he wants to do, travel and all of that fun stuff, so, yep.
I guess we should have asked for your background.
So was started as a land use planner back in the very late 90s, urban designer, kind of program manager, committee development director, and now I'm doing this, but land use, urban design is always going to be in my blood, so that's, those are the things that are exciting.
You're in the right place. I realize you're at the right meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, glad we got you during this time too, because, and, um, you know, I was on the, I think I first met Stefan when he came aboard around the time of the town center plan. And, you know, he was really invaluable and I am just really grateful that he, you know, was there for that process. He definitely added a lot to it. Um, I think he made it, he really helped make it the success it is. And I think, um, you know, I'm also really glad he was able to kind of stick around during the selection of a new city manager as well.
Yeah.
Do some onboarding, like that was really important too, so.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, we, he, I don't know if we collectively chip in for donuts or whatever, but, um, you know, I express my gratitude for his presence at whatever retirement party you have. The, um, associate planner who left, do we have any feedback for, um, government or, or was it? Um, I know there's been some retention issues. Um, is there anything we could have done better? Do you have any feedback?
Um, so this is a position we've had in the budget that we just haven't been able to get staffed up for, for about the last three years. I would say one of the things that we've had trouble with retention was pay. We, um, did a pay adjustment for the planners back in August, um, of, of two thousand and twenty-two. Because of that, just having trouble with people even applying. Um, and then we had a retirement and kind of just everything. I don't know that it's unlike many other departments or cities, um, of what we've experienced. It seems to be calming just a bit right now. There's also a salary survey going on, um, as we speak for this city, just to kind of take a look at where, where we're at in that, um, realm of other comparable jurisdictions as well. But, um, fortunately, we had a couple of, um, folks join us as associate planners, Jonathan Morales and Sarah Pizzo. And, um, they've been both here actually for just about a year, which is, um, that went fast. Um, and so they're doing a great job and hopefully, you know, we can, um, start retaining good staff and, um, you know, continue working on all the things that we have lined up on our work program, so.
So I, I think I'll circle back on the, um, the bid that went out for the artists for the, the new plaza. For those who don't know, the, there's, there were kind of two main art, uh, focal points for sort of the light rail station. One was Sound Transit Controlled Station itself, but then the plaza that is on the south side of two thirty-six, the city controls that. So the city has more say in it. Sound Transit, the way they work their artist process is that they have a list of pre-approved artists to choose from. And then that local jurisdiction can whittle that list down from like fifteen or twenty to three or four and then they'll review submissions. But Sound Transit really controls the reins and having been part of that process for, you know, the light rail station itself, they really tried to steer us into a certain direction with certain artists and we kind of pushed back on it. And even the artists that ended up being selected, would they have been selected had we had better, more freedom to choose who we wanted to choose? Probably not. So this will be, this is, this is kind of a nicer, more democratic way that it's just an open invitation for everybody to solicit.
Correct.
And then did you say they also had alternates or, or alternative designs?
Yeah, so each artist submitted two designs and they presented them last week, actually here in council chambers. And we had a pretty good crowd of folks that showed up, which was really nice. And were able to ask questions to each artist and.
It is, and I, I know, I probably know the answer to this, but is there any, any clause in whoever gets the contract that they actually have to, what they deliver has to actually look closely to what they presented?
Um, you know, I don't, I don't know the contract per se. It's, um, it's being, um, implemented through Rex and Park. Um, but I would, uh, I, you know, I think it's what, uh, there's some discussion on if there's a deviation, um, that there's an agreement with the, with the Arts Commission of, of what that art is, you know, approved and supposed to look like moving forward, so.
Okay.
I would just say that contract, contractually and what the writing is in that contract, I'm not sure. I'm just a passionate observer of getting more art into the city.
Especially as something that's such a high focal point.
Yeah, for sh, yeah, I mean, yeah, it could be iconic, um, coming in on light rail. It's a major entry point into the community, so yeah, it.
To be honest, it's, it's the artwork that people are probably going to notice before they'll notice.
Anything, yeah, absolutely.
I went out there in daylight too and I still have a hard time seeing the pattern.
Yeah.
Compared to what the, the drawings represent.
Sure, sure. And just the lack of, of light, which was a discussion as well, so, yes.
Anybody else have any questions for city manager?
Who did you say was the final say on the arts? Is it Parks and Recreation or?
It's the Arts Commission, sorry, yeah.
Okay. The previous, well, the Sound Transit one, because that was a Sound Transit project, there was a special Sound Transit Task Force that the city manager at the, not the city, the, um, the planning and development director put together at the time that consisted of, um, uh, several different, uh, uh, boards and commissions. Um, I was on it, but there were also, it was a lot of, uh, there was a subcommittee for the art itself and that was a lot of, of people from the Arts Commission. So they were on that as well. So it was all still city, city volunteers who, who, who made that decision as well. Just our hands were more tied by, with what we had to choose from, from Sound Transit. All right, so I'm not seeing or hearing anybody else have any questions for you. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, uh, miscellaneous business by call planning commissioners. Does anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any future vacations coming up?
I do, but they don't collide with the meetings.
Okay.
Can I preemptively?
The eighteenth, I can't go to that training because I'll be on vacation. I'm like, oh my gosh, first opportunity to get training and I'm out of town.
Um, I may preemptively ask for an excuse, but I think I'll probably wind up being at the next planning commission.
You just want to hold off?
Um, I'll probably say, I'll probably don't even, yeah, I'll probably just hold off.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure I'm going to be here, but just in case. I got to be here for street, street use, that's like.
Street week, it's a new program on TV, street week.
All right, not hearing or seeing anyone else. Did we, did we ever hear from Miguel at all? Okay, um, do we want to hold off until next meeting on doing an excuse absence for Miguel? Or this is, I think, two meetings in a row, so.
It is from Miguel?
I think so.
Oh, okay.
I think he was excused last time.
Was he excused last time? Okay.
Okay.
So I'll leave it up to you guys if somebody wants to make a motion tonight, we're going to excuse absence for Miguel. Do we do that or otherwise we can just wait till the next meeting? It's up to you. I'll leave it up to you guys.
I think we'll wait till the next meeting.
Okay.
Just remember to do it.
Yeah. Okay, so not hearing or seeing anything else, I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, thank you.